The time is now 6:30, calling this regular meeting to order. Present tonight, we have Councilmember Matos, Mayor Protem Cornelsson, Councilmember Moncrief, Councilmember Hodges, and Councilmember Shannon. A quorum is present. Tonight, the invocation will be given by Carter Harvey from Watershed of Godly. And if you could please rise for that, and after that, we'll be doing the pledge.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather and serve our city. Grant us wisdom, compassion, and understanding as we make the decision to affect others. May our actions tonight reflect honesty, grace, and the well-being of all. Amen.
Amen.
To the light, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll be going into public input. First person we have is Ms. Jones. Did you like how I did that? I'll let you know when you have one minute. Then, ma'am, you'll have five minutes.
Five minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
I promise, I talk fast.
All right.
Mayor, City Council, my name is Jamie Jones. I serve on the Board of Directors for the Johnson County Pioneer No Settlers Association in Alvarado. We have got our i's crossed and our t's dotted, and we are finally fixing to kick off our 133rd Johnson County Pioneer No Settlers reunion this year. It will kick off with the parade on August 27th. Directly after the parade, we will have our queen contest. We offer $1,000 scholarship to the winner. Second and third gets $250 cash. The next night, we will do the baby contest. So if you've got babies, grandbabies, or great-grandbabies, come on out and bring them. We have so much fun with that. Our theme this year is the luau. I will not be in a grass skirt, so don't look for me. On Friday, we have our fiddling contest. And we're going to, this year, we lost one of our founders of our fiddler contest, Jesse Mears, last September. So we're going to honor his family this, on Friday night, with our fiddling contest for him. And then Saturday, we have our first responder tributes. And I'm humbled to do this. This will be my sixth year to honor these chosen first responders. And we will do that at 4:00 PM, when the first responders are closed out and we have our group picture. We will then open up our concert. This year, we have Sunny and Jolie Burgess, who are Johnson County residents. Sunny and I go back a long way. He's definitely a hoot. And then we'll have Jamie Richards come onstage after that. Our carnival is open Wednesday through Saturday. It opens at 5:00 and closes at 10:00 on Wednesday and Thursday, and 11:00 on Friday and Saturday. Come on out, join our parade, bring your family. It's a reunion. If you haven't been in a while, come see us. We'll have vendors and food and all the good stuff that goes along with it. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Brittany Clint, going to speak on animal control.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Brittany Clint, and I'm here as a concerned citizen to address an issue that affects not only the welfare of animals in our town, but also the safety and quality of life for our residents. That issue is our lack of an animal control facility. Currently, our city employs a single animal control officer, one dedicated individual doing their best to respond to calls about stray, lost, injured, or dangerous animals. But here's the problem. When the officer receives a call, they have nowhere to take the animals. No shelter, no holding facility, no safe space. That means animals are often left where they are, or, in the rare cases where they can be picked up, the officer has to rely on resources or informal arrangements to care for them, if that's even possible. This isn't just an inconvenience, it's a public safety risk. Stray animals on our streets can lead to traffic accidents, bites, and the spread of disease. Unaltered animals contribute to overpopulation, and packs of feral animals can create serious threats, particularly for children and the elderly. Pet owners who animals go missing have no centralized place to call, no shelter to check, and little hope of recovery. That's not a system, it's a void. And while we may be a small city, we're not immune to the consequences of neglecting this problem. Our community deserves better. Responsible pet owners deserve a facility where they can seek help. Our lone animal control officer deserves the tools to do his job safely and effectively. And above all, the animals, many of whom are scared, sick, or lost, deserve humane treatment. A dedicated animal control facility doesn't need to be extravagant. Even a modest shelter or a temporary holding space would be a huge step forward. It would give our officer a place to bring animals instead of leaving them on the streets. It would allow us to be in tracking adoptions, reuniting pets and their families, and humanely addressing overpopulation through spay and neuter programs. Other towns our size have done it, and they've found that the benefits go far beyond animal welfare. They've seen increased civic pride, reduced calls for police intervention, and healthier neighborhoods. I know budgets are tight, but public safety, health, and compassion should always be a priority. A facility like this is an investment in all three. Let's be a city that sets a standard for how a community should treat its animals and its citizens. I ask that the council seriously consider allocating resources, exploring grants, and forming a committee to begin planning an animal control facility that meets the needs of our town. Thank you for your time and for your service to our community.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to Mayor and Council reports, presentations, and proclamations. Tonight, Mayor Houston is here from Grandview. Grandview passed an ordinance that addresses biosolids coming in from Fort Worth into their city limits, something I'm very interested in and would like the council to consider.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm having problems pulling stuff up on my phone, internet out here. I believe it's, one of the reasons we came up with this is House Bill 1750 that basically says that we cannot prohibit use of biosolids inside the state of Texas. So what we did was, I'm sure y'all are familiar with the bomb that was dropped on Grandview a couple of, last year. It was right in our backyard, even though it was outside the city limits. The big investigation and the farmers who had animals dying and was in Grandview address. So what we came up with was, we can't ban it, or we can't stop people from using the biosolids that has the PFOS in them, but we can make it as hard for them to use them as possible. So what our ordinance came, the ordinance that we came up with was, you have to pull a permit in order to bring them into our city limits. You have to have the biosolids tested before you can bring them into the city limits. They have to be tested every, I'm sorry. They have to be tested, I believe, Catherine, I'm sorry. I lost the contact this week, and I haven't got a replacement, so.
This is Catherine Redding, the Grandview City Manager.
So, yeah, go ahead. Yes. I can't read.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Catherine Redding, City Manager for the City of Grandview. So, yes, correct. The mayor, what the mayor is saying is correct. The ordinance itself, framework, is based on the prohibition of PFOS, not the prohibition of biosolids. So sort of separating those as two separate topics, right? We don't necessarily, cannot have an ability to prohibit biosolids from being used as a fertilizer. The House bill that was passed, 1570, does not allow for us to prohibit any sort of regular agricultural operations. That said, what is in within the authority, and hashtag, I am not an attorney, what is within the authority is that we can prohibit the use of PFOS inside of those biosolids. So principally, what this ordinance does is it creates a framework saying that if you want to use a land application fertilizer that contains biosolids, you can. But you first need to test it to ensure that PFOS is not present. You have to test it before, you have to test it after, and you have to provide and pay for all of those tests if that was going to be a fertilizer that you were utilizing. So that's essentially the framework of it. If you do still intend to use a land application and fertilizer and apply it to the land, what you then would have to do is erect a sign on your property allowing citizens to know that you are using sewer sludge on your land, and it does not contain PFOS in it. But you also have to let them know if they consider it a nuisance by smell or by any other measure, that they can call the TCQ hotline, and then they need to list the number on that billboard that has to be erected and seen from a street that is within 60 feet. So you've got to let citizens know if you're going to be using it, so they understand what the smell is. You need to let citizens know that it's been tested and no PFOS is present. And then you also have to let citizens know that if they have an issue with them using sewer sludge, that the appropriate agency to contact would be TCQ, because the city doesn't have any authority to prohibit that per that House bill or per TCQ regulations. And that's the framework of the ordinance in which it was created. I'll entertain any questions.
Ideally, I would like to follow suit of Grandview with what they did to limit the use of the, Fort Worth was shipping their biosolids. You know, we're sending ours to a landfill, but they're regenerating theirs into a fertilizer that they're bringing tractor and trailer loads in, putting it on some of the fields down there. That, when the investigation started, Constable, Precinct Force Constable was investigating, it was actually leaving a gray cloud over the neighborhood. And it was also contaminating the water and the soil that was killing the cattle and catfish, and even being found in stillborn calves, which would not have drank or eaten. There's a chemical, these forever chemicals are transmitted through, from mother to baby without them being born. So if you have any questions for the mayor.
Where are you regulating this at, in the City of Grandview? Are you regulating it just in the city, or are you regulating it in your ETJ one?
So all we can do is the city and the ETJ. What we were hoping by, we were the first ones to do this in Johnson County. We were hoping other cities would follow suit, and eventually the county would catch on. If we had enough cities in Johnson County that had an ordinance similar to this one, then we could always, you know, go before the county and say, hey, there's enough cities here. We need to do this in the county also.
And just to clarify, it's only regulated in municipal limits, in the City of Grandview proper. We're not allowed in TCQ, however, there are, we're looking into that, whether or not that would be allowed. That's a jurisdictional authority in which we would be able to assert permitting authority. As you know, when you're in the ETJ, it goes by limits, right? So if you're, you're city limit proper, and then your ETJ is half mile out of that. And depending on what you have in agreement with the county, such as plating authority or anything like that, where it's real gray in the state is whether or not you have permitting authority in the ETJ. And in some ways, you may, right, you may have some land use permitting authority, you know, the plating authority, but then it gets very limited. So you also are subject to other things, such as being, having petitioners being able to withdraw from the ETJ as well. So you kind of face that as another sort of construct. So from that perspective, the ETJ is a big gray area, but the city limit proper is where this ordinance would be applied and enforced, and typically done through co-enforcement, sort of your standard operations that you would have at a city.
And I don't know if y'all are aware, the farm that was investigated and had all the animal deaths and everything, they weren't actually applying the biosolids. It was a farm across the street, which is why we want every neighbor around, if you are going to use this product, we want every neighbor around to have a, to see that you are using this and possibly contaminating not only your land, but theirs also, so.
By bringing this into the city, has that stopped that person from using it? Or did they voluntarily stop, or?
It would depend on how you characterize that. I think, and I think it's a fair question, Councilmember Shannon.
Can I get you to move a little closer to the mic for me, please?
That's a fair question, Councilmember. I think that, I don't know that we have seen anything thus far that would show that we would have any act of enforcement. That said, it's just recently passed as of March of this year. So where the application would probably start would be later this year, where we would see some possible enforcement measures. I think it's just too early to tell at the moment. But possible, possible deterrents, things of that nature. All of the testing that they would have to do would be at the cost. It's very similar to, you know, an environment permit, right? If you've got a business that's doing industrial, and they're putting something down your sewer drain, as a city, you're responsible for everything that comes out of that sewer and when it's discharged. So in order to enact an environment permit to prohibit that, you would have that on the front end, and they will pay for testing to ensure that nothing being discharged. This follows that same framework.
That farm that was putting it down, was that in the city then or not? Okay.
No, not with this investigation.
Okay.
Yes, sir. No, the Johnson County, that was outside of the city limit proper. That's correct.
So technically, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have to do anything other than peer pressure of what's going on?
Yes, that's correct, yeah. With that particular property, that wouldn't have any involvement with the City of Grandview. We do have farmland within the City of Grandview that's currently farmed, so.
I don't think I, I'm not sure if I mentioned that Judge Bedeker did sign an emergency declaration for the whole county for the PFAS and forever chemicals. Good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all for your time.
So council, it's an opportunity to provide staff guidance, if you so choose, for looking into this as far as Godly following suit with the ordinance of its own.
I'd like to see that happen myself.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
Staff can look into that, please. Thank you, Bill. Catherine, thank you. Next item is consent agenda. Item A, discuss and take possible action on approval of the Godly City Council minutes from the regular meeting held on May 20, 2025. We had, did I get handed the change?
There was just two changes to the council minutes. In the title at the top, it states special call to meeting, when it was actually a regularly scheduled meeting. I did correct that. And the other change was at the beginning, when it calls the meeting to order, it also says special call to meeting, and it should have said regular session. And those were the only two changes.
Council, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion, ma'am, to accept the consent agenda as written with the corrections.
Seconded up.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hodges, and a second by Mayor Protem Cornelsson to accept the consent agenda with the changes to the minutes. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Matos?
Aye.
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 Motion passes 5 to 0. New business. Item A, discuss and take possible action to approve ordinance number 06-2025-141, requiring a permit for special events in the city and providing associated fees. Ms. Winkle?
Okay, can't have both microphones on at the same time.
Okay.
Mayor and council, I'm not sure if new council had an opportunity to see, or we even talked about special event permitting when you got here. You've got the ordinance in front of you now, and we have dissected this down. Lindsay and I did. And moved a lot of information that we had in this, and it was a very detailed ordinance, and decided to move some of the information that was in this ordinance that really pertained to procedures that we're going to move over into a policy for rental of the facilities. So that, that way, when someone does want to rent the pavilion and they want to have alcohol, they'll see all of the requirements that they will need for that. Instead of it being in an ordinance, it's a little bit easier to make amendments to a policy than it is to codify the ordinance and then make the changes to that. So this is just the basic special event permit, which talks about what they will need to do, filing an application to have a parade, or if some nonprofit or some organization would like to rent out or use the entire park itself, and how they will go about doing that. Because we've had a lot of nonprofits that have asked about having events down there. So unless they partner with the city, they would have to provide proof of insurance, go through different areas that are in this ordinance. It talks about, you know, going through inspections of whatever they might have if they want to have a carnival down there. There would have to be an inspection of the rides and so on and so forth. But the biggest amount of this that you probably saw before, that will be moved out, it has been moved out of this ordinance and will be coming to you in a policy format, where we're going to upgrade the policy that we use for the rentals. And that's really all there is to that. We've talked about it before, and it's just to get some kind of a procedure on how we handle those applications for special events that have come several times. And we didn't have any way of doing that.
Council, you have three choices on this one. You can make a motion to approve, motion to disapprove, or a, being handed the ordinance right before the City Council meeting, you can also table it to the next meeting to give yourself a chance to read it.
And I will, I will take the fall for you guys getting it late. We had some miscommunications from when this was originally drafted, when I was on leave, and thinking it was in a different space than it was when I started looking at it. So it's my fault that you got it late, and I apologize. I can answer any questions you guys have on it. Or, as the mayor said, if you guys want to take time to digest it and send any comments or concerns that you have to Brittany, if they come up later, and we can address them and bring you a version that addresses those concerns at the next meeting.
You got a question, Mayor Protem?
The cost for the permanent application, the deposits and stuff, with the, the permanent application to use the park, $350 is what they have to pay to use the park? Or is that what they put down, a deposit?
That's just, that was just the deposit. I mean, and then that's refundable as long as there's no damages.
Right.
You know, if things are not torn up. It kind of follows suit to what we already charge now to rent the park pavilion.
Yep.
They have to put down a deposit, and once they do, if we go back, and there's been a couple of times where we've had people leave the pavilion in quite a mess, and we've had to pay a plumber to come out and fix some things. That covers our charges, so we don't have to pay for it out of the city funds. It comes out of that deposit money. So it's basically the same thing.
So is the $350 a deposit, or is that the fee to use the park?
Well, it's a deposit. It's going to be a deposit. And if, like I said, if there's no damages, then that will, that would be refunded back to them. I'm trying to go back and through and see where you're at on that. Because the application itself, it's not in here. The application itself is like 10 bucks. So they'll do the application. This is going to be the deposit with their proof of insurance. And then you've already, I mean, these are already standard that are in our fee schedule for the pavilions. Those are, nothing that's changed. The amusement rides, we did check with BV to find out what they charge to do inspections for amusement rides, and they do inspect those. And it's like a pass-through, and it's like 60 bucks, so we put that in. This, some of this is the information that we're talking about that will be passed through into that policy that goes in when they do the rentals.
And that's also, it'll also be represented on whatever permit application. It'll have all the requirements that you have, what deposits are due, what fees are due, what they're for, how it works. So it'll be in a policy for the city to see, but it'll also be an application for the permit for the applicant to see. So it'll be very clear as to what they're getting charged and why, and how that process is going to work.
I only can, I'd like the word permit application to be the, it seems like when you say permit application, I have to pay that, so I'd like that to say deposit of some kind. I mean, there's costs to the city to go through the paperwork and do all this, so we should recruit that cost.
Right.
We should do a deposit from anybody. That way, any damage that we get is paid for, and they get their money back. We don't cause any.
And the application fee to process all the paperwork is $20. It's just an admin fee, because all the information that'll be turned over, the insurance, the map, getting informa, information out to the fire and police department, save for a parade, making sure all that's taken care of, does take time to put all that together. Because once that's all put together by the permit technician, and she says, yes, everything is here, she's checked everything, then we can look at it to approve it or not approve it. And then they have the ability to appeal it to you if it, if it's not approved for any reason. And that $350 deposit, we would do just like we would any other nonprofit organization. I think that's already kind of in our fee schedule anyways, that those sometimes are waived. So if the Girl Scout troop wanted to have a Girl Scout Day in the park, I'm just hypothetically, we would actually waive that deposit and let them know, of course, if there was any damages, which we wouldn't think there would be if the Girl Scouts are there. But you can have damages if there's amusement. there. But you can have damages if there's amusement rides there, the difference. So we'll just take them case by case.
Is that just for five oh one C threes specifically?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is there a number of people that determines what a special event is? Does this include, I want to take a few of my kids' friends to the park for his birthday, something like that?
No.
So what determines a special event?
Anybody who wants to set up, like a sound system, take over the pavilions, the little small, I call, I don't, I call those pavilions that are outside. To me, what y'all call, or what everyone else calls the pavilion, to me is a community center. So I have to remember the verbiage of it. But like the small, little pavilions that are out there, that wouldn't be anything to do that. It's a first comes, first served basis on those. But if you're planning on having a huge event, and I don't know what the number of people would be, but if you need most of the park taken up with your vendors and your groups, that's considered a special event.
Do we have that verbiage in here specifically for that? So what page?
You have the definition of a special event?
Yeah, just to like to...
Yes, so it's on, the definition for special event starts on the bottom of page two and goes to the first half of page three. So there's six different examples for, in the definition of what we constitute as a special event. So currently, no, it does not have a number of persons limitation. That is, that is common. So if you think that that's something that needs to be specified, we can absolutely add that. Or if there's a specific situation that you think should constitute a special event that's not included in that definition, we can expand it.
Well, at any given time, any special events I've been associated with in other cities, you could have ten people show up, or you could have a hundred and fifty people show up. I mean, it just depends, you know, of what kind of event you're going to have. But we've had so many people asking, can I have, you know, the pavilion is too small for this event. I would like it in the open space of the park. Well, that park belongs to all the residents. And even if they're having an event, it's still opened up to everyone. However, if they're taking up the big area that's opened up, where the big grassy area is, that might be taking up space where people normally play football or play soccer or whatever. So that's the reason for this.
We've also had events set up at the park that the city has knowledge of, whether it was concerts or other things going on, that opens up the city's liability if somebody is hurt. And that's also to help restrict and cover us on that.
Got it.
Just sign clear, we're not charging them to use the facility. This is just a down payment in case something goes wrong, everything's good, you get their money back. There was no cost to it.
A deposit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the park, there is still a usage fee for the pavilion.
The pavilion.
But not the park. This time, council, I'd like to entertain some, some type of motion.
I'll make a motion. We table it to our next meeting, give us time to read the ordinance and make any changes we see fit to the city offices.
I second that.
Have a motion by Mayor Protem Cornielson and a second by Councilmember Shannon to table this item till the next meeting on the twentieth?
Yes, sir.
To give the council a chance to read it and make those couple of changes that were recommended. Further discussion? Councilmember Matos?
Aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. Item B, consider approval of a resolution, R dash zero five dash two zero two five dash three five, directing publication and posting of notice of intention to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation in an amount not to exceed sixty one million dollars for the purpose of financing improvements to the city's water and sewer system, and improvements to the city's drainage system, and road improvements. Ms. Winkle?
Mr. Mayor and council, before you, is a resolution directing the publication and the posting notice of intent to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation in the amount not to exceed sixty one million dollars. And you'll see that's a broad scope that says improvements to the city's water sewer system, improvements to the city drainage system, as well as road improvements. Danny has already, in the work session, discussed the projects with you. And, of course, the plan expansion itself is fifty four million, nearly fifty five million dollars. One of the reasons that we wanted to include these other things is because if there's pipes that are in the ground and they have to tear the road up, we want to have the funding to put that back together. Not just be limited to the wastewater plant itself, but that would cover everything, anything that we may run into. So with that said, if you have any questions, we do have our financial advisor here, Laura Alexander, with Hilltop Securities. And we have a bond counsel, Brandon Hill, who is here with us, and he, they will be our, with Kelly Hart, and they will be our bond counsel through this process and walk us through each step of issuing the certificates of obligation. And they do have a, there is a presentation you have at your place, and I don't know who's going to go over that. Laura?
Good evening. I'm Laura Alexander with Hilltop Securities. So as Angie said, we're the financial advisor to the city. Really, what that means is that we help you with any financing that you need, and we serve as a fiduciary on behalf of the city. So our objective is to try to help you get the structure that you need, the structure you can afford, and then help you execute sort of on the best pricing and outcome that we can sort of manufacture within what's given to us in the marketplace. So that's our role as we move into this. And then, as she said, Brandon Hill is with Kelly Hart. He is the one that helps get all the legal side of this documented and take it through the state attorney general and get it all papered up. And so it's a legal debt of the city, and incontestable ultimately is how that works. So that's sort of his role, and we work in tandem in this process. So I thought I would start out with sort of what is a certificate of obligation, and hopefully y'all can just ask questions as we go. So I want to get you comfortable with where we're heading. We appreciate that this is a big transaction for the city and want to, you know, be as transparent as we can about the financing side of it, so that y'all feel comfortable with where we're going. So under state law, a certificate of obligation is allowed basically for any public work of the city. And it's pretty broad. It's, the powers under, allowed under CO have been reduced over time a little bit, and so economic development type projects are no longer allowed. But certainly, this sewer plan expansion is well within what's permitted under the definition of a certificate of obligation. It's a form of debt that has a tax pledge behind it. So the idea here is, the city doesn't have enough sewer revenues yet to support the new debt that would be issued to fund all of this at one time. Over time, I think, the city may have, right, enough revenue so that it would be paid for from revenues. But the best credit and pledge that the city has available is property taxes. And so what a CEO, certificate of obligation, I'll call CEO, has, is a tax pledge. So the bonds are secured by the property taxes of the city, and the city is obligated to levy a tax sufficient to pay for the debt, taking into account any other revenues that you have on hand that are available. And we'll talk about what some of those might be to try to minimize the impact of a property tax rate increase. And the first step in issuing a certificate of obligation is the notice of intent, which is what's on the agenda tonight. And that basically is a public notice process that the notice will be published in the paper, newspaper of record on behalf of the city. And it's basically sort of putting a stake in the ground and saying, you know, the city intends to consider debt. And it has the date that when you would actually be authorizing the bonds, which will be the first meeting in August. It has the maximum amount being offered, and it has the time and place of when that meeting will occur. So it's meant to just be part of a transparent public process, is what the notice of intent is intended to do. And that notice will be published twice in the paper in consecutive weeks. And then, I think the last important thing is that these are, other ways of selling tax-supported bonds are like voted bonds, where you have a bond election. And those can be expensive and time-consuming, and sometimes you don't have the lead time to go through a bond election process. And sometimes the project is, just has enough community support in general where that's not relevant. And you're limited to when you can have bond elections in Texas. And so November would have been the next time you could have an election. If for some reason, the public process results in a petition for the certificates of obligation, which means five percent of the registered voters sign their names, they present it, that would force the project to a bond election if the council still wanted to go forward with it. And if it does go to a bond election and the bond election fails, the city would be, I think, locked out from doing the project for three years. Right, looking at Brandon. So I want to be really transparent about how that part of the process works and sort of what, what could happen as we go down this path. So today is just, like I said, a public notice process that starts, starts the clock sort of ticking on this. Next, I'll stop there for a minute. Do you have any questions on the public process? So the next thing I wanted to talk about is the financial impact of selling approximately sixty million dollars of certificates of obligation. So we've looked at, the longest you could go out under state law is forty years for an amortization, so repayment schedule. You think about like your thirty year mortgage, for example. You could go forty years under state law. It would be more interest expense to go, the longer you go, you end up paying more interest, just like you do on a mortgage when you have a longer-term mortgage versus a shorter-term mortgage. I'm sure some of y'all can relate to that analysis. This is really, the mortgage is the best sort of proxy I can give individuals for how this would work. So this is kind of like the city entering into a mortgage. It's actually a public security that will be issued. It's a public, the bonds are publicly sold, and various like mutual funds and individuals can buy the bonds. I mean, it's a, it's a public process when the bonds are actually sold. And you have a third-party underwriter that's not us, that's actually out there marketing the bonds on your behalf. And then we're kind of taking a look at the pricing, actual, the rates and interest rates that they're being offered, and making sure that that's market and appropriate based on the credit of the city. So we'll weigh in on that piece of it. For conversations, we talked a little bit about thirty-five years even, and again, that's a little bit more expensive, and it doesn't really help lower your payments much. The yield curve is, it's a little bit more expensive to go longer, but it doesn't help the annual payments be much less, I guess, because you're paying more interest. So we are looking at a thirty-year, I'm going to call a level payment, so mortgage-style amortization. So, but with the first two years are just interest only. So we're trying to minimize the impact while the project is being constructed. So during the construction period, you will pay interest only on the bonds and the COs. And then in 2028, the principal payments would start. And again, that should coincide with when you have more sewer revenues available, too. I know that sewer revenues are already growing significantly. We were just looking at the draft audit for 2024, and I know there's considerable increases in those revenues. But, and impact fees are obviously available, too, to be utilized as well. Impact fees that are eligible for wastewater purposes are also eligible to be used to pay the debt service. And then the other thing that we've talked about is using interest earnings on the project funds. So we're going to fully fund the amount that is needed in the bond sale, and they all won't, all that money won't be spent on day one. It'll probably take eighteen to twenty-four months, I think, is what Danny said, to get it all done. So those funds will earn interest while they haven't been spent. And those interest earnings can be used for project costs, eligible project costs, under the notice of intent, or they could be used to offset some debt service expense. And so we've sort of, want to just sort of highlight that all those are possible. At this point, we don't necessarily have the exact mix of what we think you should do, and I'm sure Angie and I will be talking about it. It may not all be figured out, you know, even, even when you sell the bonds in August, we may not have exactly the exact plan. But we'll have certified values at least that'll come out at the end of July, so you'll know where your new property values are. Right now, we're using six hundred and forty-five million as the estimate, based on May preliminary values from the appraisal district, as just a placeholder. And then showing a little bit of growth here. So I'll walk through this a little, in a little bit more detail. So we're estimating the interest-only debt payments in 2026 and 2027 to be right around three million dollars. And then, once you start paying principal in 2028, it would be a little over four million dollars. And again, that's based on current market interest rates that I think are a little bit conservative. So I'm hoping that we'll do a little bit better than this when we get to the actual pricing. And then have a column there on slide two that says calculated debt tax rate. Essentially, if you just do the math, just pure math, on those payments and that tax base, it would be, you know, between forty-seven and fifty cents over the next few years. That would be the new debt service tax rate. So that's in addition to the maintenance and operation tax rate that the city already levies. This would be a new debt service tax rate, which is, I know, eye-popping. And we're trying to, like I said, trying to find any ways to manage that down. So in the tax rate adjusted for other funds column, basically, I've estimated interest earnings on the project fund and applied that, and it's about a million and a half dollars to buy down the interest expense. So you still owe the two point nine million, right, but you're going to have a million and a half conservatively in interest earnings. And that would not include any impact fees, but that might be a good sort of buffer, since we don't know exactly how much the interest earnings will be, but I'm trying to be conservative. It would get it closer to twenty-four cents, is what the new tax rate would be on the debts, for the debt service payments. And the next year, we've used less interest earnings and a little bit of impact fees, again, just to kind of ease into it, the payment a little bit more. And then you see it sort of levying out at fifty cents. To be honest, in 2028, that's the full tax rate. It doesn't have any impact fees or interest earnings or wastewater revenues being used to offset the payment. So again, we're hoping that these are high numbers, and I not, I just want to be, again, transparent about like worst-case scenario, so to speak, subject to market rates. And then, kind of like I said, hopefully we can do better and work down from there. So I'll pause there.
So you said about selling the full value of the bonds, the sixty-one million. Talking with Mr. Armstrong, some of the, there's some padded buffers for not knowing tariffs and some other things as to what costs will truly end up. So if we sell the full bond amount and don't need it, I don't want to get caught in a loop where, well, we sold it, so let's spend it.
Right. So there is a way for, in fact, if you don't have an eligible project, I mean, I'm not suggesting, oh, we could just do streets, so we should do streets. I'm not saying that. But there is a way to pay off the debt. It's a legal diffusance, is what it's called. So you would use the surplus bond proceeds and set up an escrow account, essentially, to legally pay off some of the debt, and it would no longer be the city's obligation. There's a way to do that. It can be cost-effective and essentially like would lower the debt burden to the city in doing so, so that there's a mechanism to do that.
I don't, I personally don't want to get caught in, I've seen other entities take the money, and, well, we got the money, we're going to spend all the money. And I don't think that's something I would want to support on that.
Yeah, I understand that. We, I mean, we talked about, too, like, would it make sense to break this into two sales? It's not really going to change the financial impact much, because if you sell less, you're going to have less money to have interest earnings on. So you're, you sort of end up in the same place and feel like this takes some of the risk out of the financing to do it all at once. But certainly, that's another option, is that it could be broken into, I say pieces, I mean, you have the fifty-four million dollar piece is the biggest piece. But you wouldn't want to start it and then not be able to finish it. And I think we were just dealing with some potential new legislative challenges we weren't sure that we're going to get through, which would have impacted your ability to maybe do this in phases. And so that was another reason why we decided to recommend going with it all at once. And we can talk more about the pros and cons of that. I think, given the size of the main piece of this, it is more prudent to go ahead and fund it all so that, you know, you have the money to complete the contract.
I'm okay with that. I just don't, like I said, want to fall in that.
Yeah.
We got the money, so let's spend it instead of refinancing or paying down, or whatever the term would be for that, and lowering the burden on the citizen.
That makes sense. Yes, sir.
Ms. Alexander, I do have a question. As far as looking through here, it looks like it's fifty-eight million dollars, but it looks like the city will be on the hook here for a hundred and nineteen million. Is that correct here?
That's the total.
That's the total impact?
Principal and interest, yes. So the fifty-eight million, I want to talk about that. So there's a schedule in the back. That's the details of all the summary here on page two. So municipal bonds, taxes on bonds tend to be sold at a premium. And what that means is that the investors might buy five percent coupon rates. So as an investor, I'm going to buy the bonds, I'm going, I want a five percent return. buy the bonds, I'm going, I want a 5% return, but that's above market right now. Like, if you go look at where treasury rates are and then discount it for where you think tax exempt rates should be, they're going to be, you know, in the low fours, for example, a 4% rate. So, market might be in the low fours, but the investor wants a 5% return, they're willing to pay more than 100 cents on the dollar for that bond to get their 5% return. Does that make sense? So, I'm willing to buy, so the, the bond is a hundred-dollar bond, maybe I'm willing to pay 110 dollars for that bond. I'm going to get my 5% interest rate twice a year, that's how bonds pay, and then I get my principal back in year 10 or whenever it matures. I'm willing to pay up for that because I'm going to get more than what the market is really offering. Municipal bonds are sold that way. I, I don't get to choose that, I'm just reporting on the facts, that's how they're sold. And so, the 58 million actually funds 60 million in this case for proceeds plus transaction costs. So, when we come back in August, assuming we keep progressing on this, it's likely that the bonds that you sell, the COs you sell will be less than 60 million, but we will be sure that they fund the 60 or 61, whatever the full project cost is that is contemplated.
Just to, just to make sure, Ms. Alexander, 119 million, right? That's the, that's the total number that we'll be, the city of Godly, we would be on the hook for.
Yes, that's the principal and interest.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct. Just like on your mortgage, you might borrow for a hundred thou, a hundred thousand-dollar house, but you end up paying, you know.
Yes, ma'am.
$220,000 when you're all sudden done.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Can you pay it off early?
Yes. You can. So, there's, well, there's a couple of options. It could be that you could refinance for savings at some point. Under federal tax law, municipal bonds are somewhat governed by IRS rules as well. You can do that one time usually, up until a call date. We can talk to Angie about, so there, this call option that you have, the city has, is usually a 10-year call option, but we can talk about even making a piece of it a little bit shorter, if you think there might be an opportunity to pay some debt off and ways to sort of manage that. It's a little bit more expensive to buy the cheaper call option, but then if you exercise it and actually pay off debt early, it ends up saving you money. So, that's something we can look into, but certainly you can pay it off early. And then, the, the other side of it, Mayor, what you were just asking about, I was talking about like setting up an escrow, because if you're not quite to that option date where you can take the bonds out early, you still would set up an escrow until that date and it would be funded to pay off bonds at that option date, so in advance. So, but it's still considered a legal defeasance and would no longer be on the city's balance sheet. Sorry, I know this is, I'm getting in the weeds, but y'all are asking good questions and it's kind of technical.
As far as paying this 100 million off, as of course, we've got wastewater revenues. You, I heard, said that those are going up. Are we looking at getting most of that paid off through that or are we looking at some bits with that, some bits raising the property tax rates? And if we are doing property tax rates, is it everyone in the city of Godly or is it just those that are using the facility?
The way the property tax rate works within the city is citywide. There's no way to differentiate that. I think the goal is to put more on the revenue side.
Is there a way to write that into where we're not looking at the property tax until it may have to be at that point, so we're looking at paying back through the wastewater revenues and things like that?
There's not enough revenue currently to make the interest payment on the bonds with just the revenues and like I said, it's not a good enough credit to support the debt where it sits today. I think part of, part of the mandate for, for the project is that you have a lot of developers and development that coming, that will come online and you have a lot more connections once this is complete. Looking at the experts here, I'm the financing person, but, and that, that's, I mean, revenues are already growing, but that ideas, there will be a lot more connections and a lot more people to spread that over ultimately, but we're, we're trying to do the best we can under the circumstances we have with the credit that is available based on the city's current profile.
I guess my concern is just if you're taking the people that currently are not going to be using it, we're having to pay for it, or they're having to pay for it. If, if the revenues come up from the wastewater transplant, is it somewhere that, that property tax can come down at things or is there ways to write all those things in so it's not affecting?
Property tax can be revisited every year. Every year, you'll revisit the property tax rate that would be decided on for this. And then, the pledge, so I've been talking about the property tax pledge because that's really where the credit is, like I said, from the potential investor's perspective. But I do want to note that technically, it'll be a combination tax and revenue pledge, so we'll have, I mean, we usually do a limited pledge, but it wouldn't have to be a limited pledge, right? So, in, in that, the reason for doing the limited pledge is really to allow more powers under state law. Whether you actually legally pledge it or not is not going to impact the credit like from an investor's perspective, but it might be helpful sort of politically, I think, to, to show that it's going to be paid from both. I mean, I think that, and certainly that is, I said, the intent, and the intent really would for it to be self-supporting would be the goal, right, from revenues. And certainly, that's where we would like to see this, this get. And we, we talked about structuring the principal payments in the early years a little more stepped up and we're still having those conversations, so that would, again, help mitigate things a little bit, but deferring principal just, again, means more interest ultimately, so it's, but we're, I think we're all open to those kinds of conversations. I just picked one scenario to talk from today and it was the most simple one.
Is it something that they've looked at where this will pay for itself over the course by the time we get all the housing that's built in there and we've got the, the lines put in that it's serving it, or does it look like that it can pay for itself completely or are we still going to be relying on other aspects?
What we're hoping to do with this and what we've been working on is there are development agreements that are in place that are additions that are coming online and so they're going to come on to our sewer and with that, that will generate the revenue from sewer that hopefully at some point in time, this will just be taken over by the water and the wastewater funds. Right now, I'm going to be really honest with you, when I got to work here, people weren't paying their water bills at all. Some were, some weren't. That's why we're seeing such a great increase in our revenues for water and wastewater because everyone turn, everyone is paying their water bills now. They're paying for their services now. So, where you weren't seeing revenues coming in, they are. Council last year went with the, the rate study that was done in '21, '22 and started that rate increase as, as the study showed in order to keep up your infrastructure and to keep things going and the water flowing and the toilets flushing, you're going to have to raise your rates for the infrastructure. So, now that all those things are taking place, we're starting to see money in the water and sewer fund. So, yes, although it may start out with property tax, but this isn't just for those users. This is, this is making changes to the infrastructure in the wastewater that the entire city needs to function. It's not just the new development, it's for everyone. Am I correct? Okay. And I, and that's just sitting through meetings with our engineers, looking at the, the age and some of the lines that are, I mean, Danny's explained all of that to y'all several times now about what, you know, where we're at with this. So, that's where we are and hopefully, I'm hoping that in the next couple of years, that the revenues for water and wastewater will increase enough to where that'll just take it on itself. In most cities, that's what happens. Usually, your water, your utilities are the moneymaker of the city, not the general fund. That's, that's just not the way it goes. So, when this gets online and starts working like it should be working, your water and your utilities department are self-sufficient and run and be able to take care of their infrastructure. So, that's what we're hoping for, if we keep going that way.
Yeah, I like that idea.
But it will need to have some help.
I don't know what the difference is between the amount of people that are on Godly water versus Johnson County water and then who's using the sep, or sewer versus the septic and if there's a difference in trying to mitigate some of that. Those that are not on any Godly water or on any septic.
Right.
Are they, they're still on, on the loop for this and they're really not benefiting from it. But if it, you know, if it's like 2% or 3%, I don't know if it's a larger amount, you know.
I couldn't tell you how many or do you know? But we do have a lot of developments or development agreements that are in place that when they annexed in, we said, yes, we'll provide these services for you. So, that's all of this process. This is where we are today because of that, so.
I do have another question as far as the, right now, this, right here is, there is no bond election, correct? As of right now, it would be on the council to decide whether that money, you know, we, we allot it or not. Okay.
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay. And then, as far as any town halls or anything like that, again, do y'all provide some of that to where y'all come out to town halls and provide the finances and y'all say, hey, this is what we got coming up after proposed approvals? I think my concern is just the transparency part, right? I think you're, you're hearing we're starting to catch up now. It's, we're talking about 119 million, we're, I'm, we're all fairly new, there's three of us that are new. It's very difficult to, to, again, to, to really push this through on my end. I just, I'm worried about the transparency, Mayor.
I understand. Correct me if I'm wrong, but normally on a critical infrastructure need is not normally put up for a bond election.
Got it, yes, sir.
Because it's, it comes down to whether the city's going to stay operational or not. I mean, as far as transparency, everything with the, with the exception of this last Hilltop Securities is posted on, on our site. Now, all the, the work sessions, all the information has been posted. I mean, it, it kind of comes back to that, we're posting the information, but we can't force them to read it.
Yes, sir.
I mean, if there is an effort to do more education, I'm happy to, you know, come to a forum, I'm not, I mean, I'm, that's fine with me. I will say too, that the notice of intent does not obligate you to move forward, it just starts the process.
Okay. And then, how long do we, so you've notified us here, how long exactly do we have after the mic turns off for you? What's the next date that we need to be like?
So, I mean, the way the schedule works is actually the, next page. So, we'll publish the notice, I have June 18th and June 25th, but I'm sensing that we'll probably do it sooner.
It's the 19th and I think the 20th because the way our.
Yeah, they are published on Thursday and Saturday.
We might move it up a week.
Oh, yeah, we did, we did say that, we would do it the 12th and the 19th.
So, we don't cut it so close.
Yeah, we were going to do it on the 12th and the 19th.
Okay. So, notice published on the 12th and 19th of June in the Cleveland paper, be the next two steps. And really, I mean, on the schedule and then August 5th is the date that is being set for action on the bonds. And so, we will have, the morning of August 5th, we will have been in the bond market and actually like sold and priced the bonds and bring to you the final terms that night. If ideally, we would know that council was in support of that, it's better not to be in the bond market and pricing bonds if you don't think it's going to be approved. So, I mean, I'll be talking to Angie and obviously, you know, work, work through that if there's significant concerns. Again, if we stay on the schedule. I mean, there's plenty of time in between for you guys to not, to decide not to move forward. I'm saying that between now and August 5th, because we'll keep doing what we're going to do in the background to be in a position to sell the bonds then. The sort of quote-unquote transaction costs are all really contingent on the bonds being sold, so there aren't, like the meters really aren't running, even though there's work being done and like I said, we're used to working on a contingent basis, that's kind of how our industries work. So, that's, I mean, I'd say that, that, that's kind of from a timing perspective, I don't know if I answered your question, but that's kind of how, as I see it.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
So, is this September, is that when we're adapting the new tax rate for the property?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have an idea of what that may be looking like?
No, not yet, but more than likely, we're going to be adopting before September.
Okay.
Because if we do have to have a property tax increase, then we have to move faster and so that runs like in August, because it, yeah.
So, the second meeting in August is 28th?
So, and I don't know right this minute. I don't even get anything from the county on the appraisals till July the 25th. So, I'm talking about days, I only have like a couple of days to put that together. The, the budget has been, has started with directors and we start next week individually going over their departmental budgets and then we will do a work session with council. But I can tell you, we're going to try to be very conservative and do the best that we can, so. So, yeah, everything's fixing to go really fast with this.
Danny, how many, what percentage of the people using the wastewater treatment plant are not in the city?
They're all in the city.
They're all in the city.
Nope, I'm not.
We've tied within, we have made agreements to take somebody's waste and dump it, bringing these, all these developments coming on, they're in our ETJ.
Say that again, I can't.
Have we, have we taken any ones of the ETJs and the developments in the ETJ or any of those dumping into our wastewater treatment plant?
No, they're annexed into the city when they're.
All of them are.
As far as I know. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, this one.
You're asking like you might know something I don't, but as far as I know, they're all in the city limits.
I just know that, don't worry about it, I got it, is what I, is a phrase that we used, I just want to make sure we got it.
We got it.
Okay. Because in the past, it was always, we give in and we'll give in and we'll get in all kinds of neat wonderful things, but we never got any of them.
No.
But if we got 100%, that's fine.
Well, yeah, as far as I'm aware, every sewer customer is in the city limits. Those, those are annexed in when they're completed.
They're all annexed? Okay, that's a right question.
And that's what we're tied to right now is development agreements, or I'm sorry, service agreements when they annex in, we have said that we would be providing those services for them. Some of them are sewer, I guess not a lot of them are water because they're adjacent area, but you could have sewer.
Yeah, so.
And so, that's where we're at on that.
Yeah. I think it's good to remind you guys like I did last time, the city's committed to a lot more than what we can treat and that's the reason we're having to do this. It's not a want-to, it's a have-to.
I know.
And there's a lot of commitments out there that past council members have committed us to that we've got to get caught up. I mean, that's, we're just going to talk straight to you and that's where we're at. So, you know, you decide not to do this, I, I don't know where that goes, or honestly don't, because you cannot, you cannot take care of the lots that you already have out there if you don't do this infrastructure.
I think the city attorney answered at a previous meeting that if we do not take care of this, we'll be looking at lawsuits against the city.
Perfect.
So, Mayor, if I may, make a motion?
Yes, sir.
A motion to postpone.
Yes, you may make a motion.
Yeah. May I motion council to postpone this to our next meeting, please, so we get more information?
I second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Matos and a second by Councilmember Shannon to postpone this to the 20th until they get more information. On discussion, the first thing I'm going to ask is what information are you looking for?
I'd still need to figure out, I like to see more, but I also need to figure out, Mayor, we're still fairly new, sir. There, you're asking us to approve 119 million for the city. Again, please give us more time, we need more time, sir.
Well, I, you said you wanted, I'm just clarifying, you said to receive more information.
No, for sure, no. Yeah, I would like to see more information in regards to how exactly we can petition 5% of our registered voters in the city to force a possible bond election. I need to just understand a little bit more of that at this point right now.
So, if I, if I understand you correctly, you want to start the petition for, to put this on a bond in a November election?
I just want more transparency, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. Further discussion?
Mayor, can I just speak to the impact of the timing?
Please.
So, a couple of thoughts. One is, obviously, the whole schedule will shift and you will not set a tax rate this year based on the timing if, if you defer this, so it would, you know, fall into the next fiscal year and you would be structuring the debt, you know, waiting on, I guess, the next tax rate cycle basically to, to, to be able to levy a tax for the debt, that's just an observation. Logistically, you have to call an election roughly like by the third week of August, I think, for a November election.
It's the 18th.
18th, yeah. Eighteenth, yeah, for a November election. Or you would be, it would fall to the May election, I'd just say from a timing perspective. And I don't know what kind of constraints you're under the agreements in terms of timing if you, you know, are off-cycle from this. I'm not trying to create urgency that isn't already there. I'm just trying to tell you the implications as I see it. And I don't know if you have any other thoughts.
So, hold on, Ms. Alexander, is, is two weeks, are we still within timeframe within two weeks? Or are we completely dead in the water with, outside of the two weeks?
We're not going to stay on the schedule in two weeks.
If I understand what you said earlier, the council approval tonight would just allow you to move forward, but makes no monetary commitment on the city's behalf.
Correct.
That would not happen until,
August fifth.
The August twenty-seventh or August fifth?
August fifth.
August fifth, which is three meetings away, two meetings away. No, five meetings away. Yeah, I forgot about July. There's no.
And this is only publishing the intent, just the intent, that we want to issue the sixty-one million. If you would like, if council directs us to have a town hall meeting and invite everybody up here so that we can explain the situation, I mean, that's one thing that we can do.
Okay.
That is something that could be done.
Okay, I can then make an amendment then.
Right? And Danny can give all the information that we have that we've been given to us by our engineering firm to tell them, you know, what situation we're currently in.
You can't make, you cannot amend it at this time since there's been a second. Ms. Winkle, if this were pushed to next year, what's that going to do to our capacity in the plant?
For sure.
I think that's a complicated question. Capacity is, is one thing. You're pushing it back, but also I think there's other things like house bills and things that were, are going to come into effect that are going to affect the money that you can borrow in the near future. So capacity-wise, we're hoping to get to the eighteen months with what we've got. You push it back another twelve, I, I don't, I can't tell you exactly where that's going to put us.
We're going to overflow somewhere.
Yes. And then that causes all kinds of other issues. We'll go into enforcement. We'll be filling the creeks full of wastewater because we can't take it.
TCEQ comes in and everything gets up.
Yes.
Is there further discussion for this motion? So right now I have a motion to postpone it to the twentieth. Councilmember Matos?
Aye. No.
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 Aye.
Motion fails, two to three. At this point in time, ma'am, you can continue with what you're saying, if you would like.
Sir, I'm done with my formal presentation, but I'm happy to answer any other questions.
So do I have a, another motion at this time?
I'll make a motion to consider the approval of Resolution R-oh-five-two-oh-two-five-three-five, directing publication and posting a notice of intention for the certificate of obligation.
I'll second that.
Mayor, can I make an amendment to this?
One moment.
Yes, sir.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hodges and a second by Mayor Protemco Nielsen to approve Resolution R dash zero-five dash two-zero-two-five dash three-five, directing publication, posting a notice of intent for certificate of obligation. Further discussion?
Can we have said town halls as Ms. Winkle and Ms. Alexander mentioned here? Here, can we add that? I would like to see some transparency, at least more information given. I understand that we posted on the internet. I understand that. But this is something that I, I will be very firm on this, sir.
What I recommend, and tell me if I'm wrong, that we do that as staff guidance and we carry the motion as it is.
Yes, sir.
And move forward from there.
Yes, sir.
After this one.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to have the, open the meeting. It was a town hall type meeting. That'd be, okay. But we've been talking, now I know three of you haven't, but Stephanie and I have heard this since we, for the last couple of years. Basically, the state is possibly come in at any point in time and take over our system, costing us a whole lot more money. I believe we need to come out and get ahead of this before it gets worse. And that's why I would vote for it, to go into, to start the process.
Okay. Further discussion? Councilmember Matos?
Nay.
Yes.
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 Nay.
Motion passes, three to two. I guess we really don't need to reiterate the guidance from the council to set up a town hall to do this publicly and put out the information to the,
We'll look at our, our schedule with, with the council meetings, and it'll probably have to be on an off week. I would think that if we, I mean, we're in June. It would have to be in July to make deadlines. And, you know, maybe, probably not the first week of July because that's close to the fourth and people are out of town, maybe, yeah, somewhere around the tenth. And then just get it advertised and get it out there for people to come and hear about it. But that's, you know, we, we've had several discussions about it before. So we're prepared and we have the information that we need to pass on.
All right, moving on to, thank you, ma'am. Items of community interest. June seventh is Godly Night at Cleburne Railroaders. We have, there is links on the different Godly pages to buy tickets that proceeds will be split among nonprofits. July eighth, or I'm sorry, June eighth, from five to seven, the Lions Club is having a ice cream social at the Pavilion. It's free of charge. And June nineteenth, the city offices will be closed. Is there anything I'm forgetting, ma'am?
July the fifth is our independent celebration and fireworks show. It starts at six and the fireworks show will start approximately nine fifteen. So y'all come to the park, bring your lawn chair.
There is no executive session tonight. So if there's no further business tonight, I will adjourn this meeting at seven forty-eight PM.